You've helped your staff. So, everybody who's here and for the board and everybody watching, this meeting could get a little bit disjointed. We do have several non-publics to go into, which based on the discussions we'll be having will likely be a part of discussion. We may go into non-public to have further discussion and then come out to talk about what we've decided on and such. So, for everybody on Zoom, if you just hold on, we will definitely come back. So, just appreciate that from you. At this time, is there anybody here in the public would like to make a thought? All right, I'm seeing none. And to the approval of minutes, has everybody had a chance to read them?
Yep. And then send my, my suggestions to Mr. E. I mean, and so I'll make a motion to accept these E. or A. through F. minutes as they're currently written.
All in favor? Can I let you do some thought on that? I'm good. All right, thank you. All right, then move on to the actual agenda. First order of business is to accept the resignation of Ken Ethan as our vice chair. And I'd love to finish that with sadness. I've appreciated everything that's been done since we've given.
I want to take the opportunity as one member of the board to express my deep appreciation for all of the time that you've spent doing that and also to apologize if any of our actions are the reason for this because I think you've done a fantastic job and I think it's a real bummer. So, thank you.
So, would anybody like to make that motion?
Well, I can agree with what Jamie just said, but I'll throw my hand in there to be the next vice chairperson.
Before we do that, though, is there anybody who would make the motion to accept the nomination? No, why not?
Not sure I can make the motion myself.
Probably, yeah.
There's no reason to. So, I make a motion to accept.
Consider.
I make the motion to accept the resignation attempt as vice chairperson.
Well, since it's what you seem to want, oh, a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I am saying aye with a caveat that I didn't know because that is for each gentleman. I appreciate that.
I say no.
That's what he wants, yes?
All right. At this point, we have heard from Joe that he may be willing to give on the role of vice chairs. Or anybody else who would like to step up for the upper hand?
I don't know this. I don't know whether Sarah would want to or not. Have you spoken to her? Or not?
Um, I have not in terms of that. I know she did not want to step back into her role as chair, as I imagine. But I don't know. We can move this to later on in the agenda.
I'm sure she'd probably be very happy for me to do it.
I will second that, Joe.
I'll make the motion to allow Joe to sit in my chair's spot.
All right, you do have a second.
You don't need a second for nomination, though. I'll second it.
I don't. All right. All? Just about. All right. Everyone in favor? Aye. Anyone? Oh, thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Welcome to working closely. All right. There are an opportunity to receive the personnel list. I'll give the motion to accept the personnel list as presented. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to comment that it looks like there was an incredible amount of work done this summer to put people in places that are going to serve our students. And so, I appreciate the amount of work that's been done. So, all that being said, anything else?
With gratitude, yes.
All right. Then I will accept that motion. All in favor? All right, moving right along. The next item is school board goals. We've had quite a bit of discussion with our previous superintendent and such things about what he wanted us to have for goals. Does anybody here have a particular idea about what they would like us to have for our goal this upcoming school year?
Yes, I do. So, we've talked about, and we've kind of actually mentioned it in public about looking at kind of reviewing the, this articles agreement, thinking about getting the towns more autonomy. And that's pretty much a lot of steps involved in that. I think that should be one of our goals. And if it is our goal, it needs to be one of the very few goals that we're going to tackle. Because I think that would be finished by, maybe finished by Jamie, I believe.
Is that something we can set up as a very specific agenda item and invite Matt to come in and talk to us about what our options are, how other districts do such things?
I think if we adopt it as a goal, sure. Then we can bring Matt in and start talking. I'm sure you can get us lots of different topics and different SAUs and how they organize themselves. We can learn from not building from old thought, right? So, if we move forward, move ahead. I think we need to involve the community in that whole discussion a lot. So, the sooner we can get on it, the sooner the better. It's going to take a lot of air from the school board to do that.
Are there any other thoughts about large topics?
Yeah.
You look like you have a house thought.
I was, I was going to say, we were working last year with Steve Barone possible change to the high school appropriation as part of our community exchange. Do we want to continue with that? Because I, I would like to try and clean that up a little bit more than what we have.
I think that's part of it. I think it's definitely one of the options that we'll have to address as a, an option to bring into public, for sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, Kevin, do you see that as a part of it? That?
I think fix that when we're fixing it up. Because we're right, because we're going to be doing a lot, as you know, we're going to be doing a lot, pulling a lot of things apart. So, we'll have lots of things to fix.
So, because what you're talking about as a goal is like looking through the articles where some of the towns' folks have wanted more autonomy, correct? So, as a part of that, at the same time, right, that could be pulled out.
Well, yeah, I mean, right now, the five towns are all together. I'm doing anything with the high school.
Right.
And, and I, I, when, when I was working with Alyssa and Steve Barone on that, we, we found some things that, that would work better and seemed more fair.
Right.
To do it that way. But we, we went down that path and then we had to stop. We, other things more, you know, more pressing came to mind and we, we put it off for another year. And I'd like to get that, get that in there or get, get it, get it in front of the voters.
If the message changed. So, one thing that I have seen as in my time on this board is that we keep coming back to these same topics. And so, that in itself has been a struggle with the amount of turnover and things like that that we've had here. This Articles of Agreement conversation certainly needs to happen, especially since we've been through one withdrawal. We're looking at a second. There's a lot of people who are invested in this kind of thing. And I think it's really important that we do focus on that this year. But one thing I think we also need to project in this district is just a level of simplicity, a level of we need some stability too. So, we, we got some data today. I'm the fourth superintendent in three years. And Lori is the fourth BA in four years. That is higher than any other SAU in the state.
I would hope so.
And so.
I hope everybody is going through all of it.
So, that's a lot, right? That's a lot. And so, if we think about our structures as a organization at large, yes, we clearly are hearing these messages externally and internally about the need to operate in a way that better meets the needs of our individual communities and also that simplifies our formulas and our connection with each other because everything right now seems to some degree overcomplicated. And so, how do we simplify things? And then just how do we provide some stability moving forward? Whether it's our structure of how we operate as an SAU or whether it's our structure is how we operate within leadership within our, like, in our SAU. So, how do we, how do we simplify those things? And how do we provide some stability so we are attractive to people in the future at all levels of our organization, right? And families wanting to move here. Which makes me wonder if the first and maybe the top goal that we could have as a board is literally to stabilize the district and simplify. So, every conversation that we have going forward brings us back to something like that. Is it going to simplify what we're doing so that everybody can understand it? Is it going to simplify it so that all of our students know what the expectations are? Is it going to simplify it so that when people want to move here, they know what to do? And does it stabilize us so that everybody who's already within our district can stay and grow here? That is.
Well, yeah, I think that we've got to try something because we can't keep going down this path.
Right. So, would any, everybody, anybody be amenable to adopting something in those words or somebody could word it as our goal is to simplify and stabilize the district or the point of.
Yes, yes, but if we didn't, if we did that, changing our articles agreement would be counter to that, or you're saying, at least reviewing, you're saying no. We could do both.
Well, I'm thinking that. I think it is. I, I think it is that, right? So, so right now, we operate with our Articles of Agreement in one way. That is one way to operate in SAU in the state of New Hampshire. There are uh, I've worked in four SAUs in the state of New Hampshire, and all four of them have operated in a different way. So, there are multiple ways to operate as an SAU. We picked the current way, but I'm not sure the current way meets our current needs as communities all coming together, right? And so, we talked about this at a staff meeting earlier this week. It's not that the old layer that currently is bad. It's just that sometimes you grow out of your clothes and you need to buy new clothes that better fit your needs right now. And so, that's part of this bigger conversation of what are our needs now? So, this is how we've been doing things. And we can evaluate it. And at the end, we might say, no, this is still the best way to do it. Or we can evaluate it and at the end say, you know what? No, I'm, I think as however many towns and communities coming together, bless you, this is the way we want to move forward because that's what, that's the needs of our communities now. So, I think the idea of simplifying and stabilizing encompasses that conversation at the apex, and then we work from there. That, I, I think that's to some degree holding us back right now from being able to move forward, to being able to achieve that stability because you go a year, six months, twelve, you know, fifteen months and, and something shifts. Because we're a little bit round, egg, square, hole with some things.
I believe that our Articles Agreement originally written in sixty-four, is that the year or sixty-three?
No, well, yes, original sixty-four. Four different revisions over forty years.
Sixty years, because I was born in sixty-four. I just turned sixty.
No, no, but I mean that there hasn't been a revision to them since other than just the capital sections, there have been no method or other revisions since two thousand and one. So, which Article of Agreement are we tackling?
I think it's the document itself.
Right. So, that's going to take longer than March.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely. Right? So, you have to start.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. But you're talking about schools. I'm assuming that you mean schools within the given year, not a five-year school world.
It is, I think.
So, we keep going back to strategic plan, Articles of Agreement. So, how do, what is the plan to move forward? I think that's up to all of us to decide. And it's going to take a bigger commitment than meeting once a month or twice a month in a regular board meeting.
Right.
All right. So, so I agree with you that we should have a short-term goal, which is your one-year goal, which could be, to Joe's point, let's tackle the high school's formula and see if we can, you know, look at that. And because that's been being worked on since I left, and that's more than eight years ago. I spent a whole year going through that with folks well before I left, ten years ago. And so, I think that's been when it's come back and back and back and back, and we've never moved it forward. So, the short-term goal, I think that's a great one to pull out and say, look, we've got all this data, all this work. Can't we just come to an agreement on something and see if the people agree? Right? Because that could be an article, it could be a change in a law article this much.
We have the same conversations over and over and over again.
Yes, you do.
And it gets exhausting. And nobody goes anywhere. And you just get frustrated. And ultimately, people are just like, you know what? I'm tired of having the same conversation on that.
Yeah.
And whether it's, whether it's at the board or the administrative or the teacher or the parent level, all levels of our organization, this is what we continue to do. So, I think however you choose that entry point to tackle this for real this time is up to you. But I think that if it's a conversation that you continue to have over and over and over again, at some point, you just got to pull the trigger and figure out what that next step is. And if that next step is looking at how the high school is structured, or that next step is I'll let these articles in their entirety don't work for us anymore. We need a new complete structure. We're going to put a vote together for, and two years from now, we're a completely different organization. Okay, I don't know. I don't know where you're going to all of them. But I think we, some action has to move us forward. Sometimes the wrong action is better than no action at all.
So, understand your frustration and your point.
Yeah.
It's not that quick and easy to change a whole set of articles, right?
Absolutely.
All right. Yes. So, but yes, you're right. It's frustrating because you never make any movement at all. Although, I don't believe that. I think we've made some movement. We've, we've, we've had an article go out and we've changed it once. It was a big one, right? So, in order to change the SAU and the structure, I guess you all need to come up with an idea of what you think might work for it now because that's one of the methods. And so, if you're going to change it, then the method has to be looked at individually from the whole rest of it. Sucks. There's twelve pieces, right? But that's the way it is. And I think to embark to Shelley's point on all twelve of them in a very short period of time, we'll shoot ourselves in the foot. It's not going to go. So, pull some pieces out that are critical to your point, SAU, maybe the method for high school, you know?
There's, yes, Sarah.
I'm sorry that I was late. My computer was being stupid, but it's not my fault. But, um, I, so I'm kind of jumping into the conversation after it's already started. So, correct me, you know, just throw me under the bus if, if I'm, if I'm going the wrong direction. But it seems to me that we're talking about, if we're talking about changing the entire structure of the district, we're missing somebody. And that is, we don't have a superintendent. And I know that the administrative team was frustrated with the last superintendent and that they have been frustrated with this, that they were frustrated at the end with the superintendent before that. However, the way that the structure of schools in the state is, is that there is a superintendent that is the leader of the district. And I think that before we start talking about making a huge change to everything and switching from being one district to being separate districts or whatever direction we're, we're looking at, we need a superintendent who would be able to guide that process. And so, I, I, I strongly agree that we need to discuss it. And in terms of a school district, a school board goal, look, start looking at another of the, we looked at one of the Articles of Agreement last year. We made, we, we, I think we did some good work with that. We were able to bring it to the voters. We were able to make it, make a pretty major change. I think if we take a, a look at a different one of the Articles of Agreement that we think is the next one that we need to look at, it makes much more sense for us to take one bite of the elephant than to try to eat the whole elephant when we don't even have a leader to, to, that, that we, we can be working with to help us move forward with that. That, that's my opinion. And I, and I totally hear you. I think we, and it is, you know, as I was hearing the discussion, I'm like, oh, my God, I've heard this so many times, you know? It was like, you know, but I do think we made some movement last year with doing, with, with saying, okay, we're going to look at this one and do something with it. So, I think that that's now I'll shut up because I'm sitting, sitting over again. Sorry.
So, if we, we're going to talk about superintendent search today anyway, but in my mind, I'm thinking we're not going to, they start this, the real superintendent search and probably until the spring. We wouldn't have a real superintendent until probably twenty, July of twenty twenty-five. So, if we kind of just, right, that's next year, right?
We actually would start the superintendent search before the spring because that's what past one week into it.
Sorry, sorry. Spring semester, I think spring semester, which starts in January. So, I know it's not really spring. That's just when, that's what I mean, what spring means, January. So, if we I'm concerned about waiting that long to start having at least discussions and building some groundwork. So, then the super, maybe we do wait to decisions until the superintendent comes in, but we started the conversation. Because there's a lot of steps in that process. We're going to have to get a, a lot of information, how that's going to affect us financially. All the kind of models of different ways of doing things and how it's going to affect students and affect administrators. I think we could have all that, you can still do that work while we're waiting for a superintendent to come along. We also, we also have a very capable policy wonk as our interim right now who I think would need us and has superintendent experience and would help us through that process, I hope.
Go ahead, Jamie.
It's chicken and egg, right? However, I think it would be important for us to start the discussions then. I see both sides of it. Because if we're going to go in a direction that's totally different than where we're at, it may affect whether or not somebody wants to come to work here. If they've got to go to five school board meetings because we break up as a district and we're five individual town districts and one regional high school, that's a lot of meetings, okay? And so, it totally changes the structure of everything here. And, you know, I think if that's what we're talking about, that's an important piece to have somewhat figured out before you go trying to hire somebody and then spring it on and after they sign a two-year agreement or whatever, right? Yeah. So, I think earlier conversation is not harmful.
Go ahead, Joe.
So, I was under the assumption two years ago when we started working on the Articles of Agreement, and we made that one change, that the next year, we're just going to do another change and another change and another change. And we just, I don't know, we just keep spinning our wheels. We already looked at the Articles of Agreement. We already highlighted the ones we wanted to change. I'm not sure why we just are not looking at that document back in our past minutes to say, okay, these, these were the ones we highlighted. This is what we're going to move next. The other conversation that absolutely has to be a part of this is what are, what of those Articles of Agreement changes would possibly benefit the fact that we've got a withdrawal going on? So, there, there is a town that's unhappy with some of the things that are happening, no different than another town that wanted to withdraw. So, we keep kind of skirting the issue, but I think Corey kind of said it, and that was getting some stability and, and making things simpler for all of these towns to be independent. And I think we can do that within our Articles of Agreement. I think sometimes we just make it a heck of a lot harder than what it is. I was told a million times over that that Article of Agreement that we put on the warrant was never going to pass. And it passed by ten folds. So, we think our communities are ready for change. We just need to pull the trigger. And I, I appreciate what Joe says about changing the methods at the high school. I think there's a whole lot of more work that needs to be done community-wise and togetherness-wise before we start tackling methods. Or not?
It's a question. I don't know. I want to know what Shelley thinks. So, if we break apart the five, I don't know. I don't know the answer. That's why I'm asking the question. If we look to break apart the five towns into their own autonomous districts, which is what you're talking about.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Well, how do you, how do you gain autonomy then over their own budget? That's the only way to do it.
I, I didn't bring money into it.
Okay.
Everybody else is bringing.
That's what's going on. That's what's.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. I think
Okay.
I, I think at the root of all the issues, people are going to look at the budget because it's easy to argue about something you don't understand.
Okay.
So, of course, a big town like Trail Sound, forty-six percent, and I'm not necessarily looking at you because I know you weren't part of it. But if you can't line up tho, all those little lines, it's easy to be confused about it. It's easy to think that there might be something going on that isn't going on. And there could be something going on. I, I don't know. But the fact of the matter is, is that we used to come together and we used to do things as a whole, knowing that it would benefit us as a whole. There are still things in that Article of Agreement that can be changed to give autonomy to people without having to, to completely derail the whole the whole budget, which, by the way, Lori is still kind of learning. Right? I mean, do you want, do you want the board to look at you and say, we're going to scrap everything? And now, we need to come up with a different way?
But I think you've got a really good point in that we do need to sit down with Matt and with all of us and have a specific discussion about what that looks like. Can we, by law, separate the towns and have separate budgets? Can we keep some of what we have and not some other things? Can we give autonomy and still stay together as one district? We need to have that discussion. Because from all the years of talking about this, the one thing I've seen is that we can't because of that bottom line that we all vote on and all these other things. So, we do need to sit around a table and have those conversations about how to give these individual towns that ability to run their own schools and make their own decisions and spend their own money the way they see fit.
I agree. So, I think, I would like to propose that our next, our next meeting, we have Matt come, like you mentioned earlier, to, well, asking those questions. And we have like a listening session to understand what those options are.
And a copy of the Articles of Agreement, once again, possibly with the updates that are in there and maybe some of the talking points we had in the past, just so we're not.
I don't think we're going to have to start from scratch.
I would also like an, like, like some type of update on where the withdrawal discussion is in Walpole when we meet with Matt. Because I think anything we do right now as, as a board, even on some lines as an administration, we need to recognize, and we really even on some lines as an administration, we need to recognize and we really haven't recognized the fact that there are some very heated discussions happening. And when you look at some of the withdrawal minutes, they're talking about option C. Oh, maybe they're not going to withdraw. Maybe they're going to do option C. Well, it's great that you're talking about option C, but you might want to talk to the board. Because if option C is something that we could all consider, then that would be a conversation that we would have with, with Matt as well.
Absolutely. So. They have a public hearing scheduled for September nineteenth on the subject.
Because what I don't want to do is get into almost March and have the withdrawal committee come forward and present sixteen different things, or I won't, I'll try not to be sarcastic, present two different items that actually we all could have been working on for the last couple of months. And now we can't make a move in March because we're being presented with it in January or February.
Should be a night. Is Steve Barone still on the budget committee?
No, I think we need to invite the withdrawal committee, which is not just Steve Barone.
So I just, could we invite them, does it make sense to invite them to our next meeting that Matt's going to, our next meeting? Here with us?
Personal opinion.
I think they could just send an update.
Personal opinion would be that that's a discussion with the school district's attorney, right? It's not the school district's attorney listening to their question to give them guidance. So that's what I wouldn't want to have happen, right? It could be unfair to the residents of your town and the residents of, you know what I mean, for, for Matt's charges to be directed for Walco's game. Maybe just copies of all meeting minutes.
So that we can all, we can all review. They're online.
They are.
So, and they're, and they're fairly detailed. We could look through them and see if anything's pertinent to ask.
Would it be appropriate, and no is a completely okay answer. Would it be appropriate for the board to send a communication to the withdrawal committee about the fact that the board is requesting that their attorney come and present different options and talk to the board about the Articles of Agreement because they recognize that to shift things to make it better for everybody. I don't know what this. Again, no is a completely fine answer, but just a question that I have is should we also be sharing information with the withdrawal committee, not just one way?
I just don't. Sorry.
Go ahead.
But I don't think it's. I don't think it's right that one withdrawal got totally annihilated and, and not annihilated. Ignored.
Fair enough. I don't have that context. Okay.
Yeah, I think that it might, we expend money on behalf of the school district for the benefit of Walpole. I'm not just saying that because oh, what's going on? That's not fair to the other towns, right? So, so we've recognized that there's something going on. They've reached out to some of us as residents, okay? And so I think there's a lot of data out there. Is it all correct? Possibly not, then brought to my attention. I haven't had a chance to look into it. I promise I will try. And so, because I want the administration to be right, not skewed.
I would, I would hope that their committee, their town committee, so let's be very clear about that. This is a town that has not moved to a district-wide committee. Their town committee, I would hope, is keeping an eye on our school board meetings and some of our discussions and and that's pretty much how these things work and till there may be something on the March warrant that might make this a bigger discussion.
Sure.
District-wide discussion.
I think that's an important point. Well taken. So I think what I've heard here is that we all want this to happen this year, this discussion to be on agenda sooner rather than later. And as a board, we've decided that as, that's a goal that we have this year is to at least take the next step forward. Instead of spinning our wheels and talking about the same thing we've been talking about for decades here, actually move it forward one way or another.
So Matt will be at the next meeting? Or we'll try, we'll try.
We'll go. Okay. All right. Excellent. Is there any other goal in particular that people want to discuss at this time?
I, I don't. I think that this is going to, this is going to take a lot of our time. And then this also affects, I don't want, I really would like to work on strategic plan, but if this change affects, I don't have all that left to be for not. So I would like to hold off on that until we decide how we're going to structure. Or how we're going to suggest we need to structure. So I think this is going to take up this. But no plans to.
Okay.
Nothing else.
I think this is a, a good way to move forward. That is a heavy lift. Is everyone okay with using some sort of wording such as structure as a guiding light for the decisions we make? Something to look back on when we're a measure of what decisions we're making. Simplify, something along the lines of simplify and structure or either way. Stabilize and simplify, that works. All right. I don't think we need a motion to adopt such a thing, but I think we keep it in mind. We can remind each other that that's our goal.
So one goal with the work on, right, basically, is what you're like, stabilize and simplify as one. And then the Articles of Agreement and review of methods, that all kind of falls under, under that. Is that what I'm understanding?
How I see it falling together. I think that helps simplify and stabilize us as well. All right. Well, thank you very much for that discussion. I'm looking forward to the rest of them. So the next discussion we have at the moment is an update on the Sarah Porter School.
So we are also very excited to talk about the big Sarah Porter School. We were able to hire a teacher for the one-two combined classroom. Emma Van Alstine, I don't know. She was a former employee of ours. The parent had left. In my conversation with her on the teacher day, she's like, I checked the left side every single year. Because she did want to come back in that capacity and was excited that she finally had the opportunity this summer to do so. So we are very excited to have her. It brings some stability to Sarah Porter. And then it kind of ties into our prior discussion regarding the Articles and our structure as an S A U and and I think it's, it's important for that community to weigh in and the board's larger discussions in a way that works for that community. So for now, Sarah Porter remains a status quo and like all of the communities in, in S A sixty become part of a larger conversation about how are we organized? How are we structured? What do our Articles of Agreement look like? How we move forward? So.
Fantastic. Anybody have any other thoughts I want to add to that?
It's great. Our families, a lot of them have worked for the district in many different capacities, but big family, good family.
All right, terrific. Then moving on, we do need to have a discussion about ESSR funds and where we're at. We're down to the wire.
Yeah, we are down to the wire. Excuse me. We have about five hundred and eighty thousand that's not budgeted for. We do have some ideas on what, I know, I have some ideas on what we can. What we're trying to put forward, we've requested that the grant be returned because we're working on still writing some additional activities. We have, so the, the big point is that we have a lot of claiming to do. I've been working on reconciling various grants with all of the transition that occurred last year. There were some processes that normally were seamless that did not happen seamlessly. And that was mainly providing updated grant funding numbers for different positions. And then as we threw activities into the ESSR, there, they might be related to some of the other grants. So there was some cross accounting, if you will, that I've been working on reconciling. And so I have those reconciled now and I reached out to the state today asking if there's, if they have time to work with me this week. Excuse me. So we can submit and process things quickly. So now that I have my ducks in a row, I'm ready to, to start doing that. The monies that we've budgeted have gone, are budgeted for our curriculum. We've used it for technology. We've purchased some vehicles. Lots of staff, as we all know, that's been a big discussion over the last year. So lots of staffing needs and benefits have been addressed through the budget for the, the ESSR monies as well. So we, we still have an opportunity to obligate funds through September thirtieth. I would like to have them obligated by the thirteenth. And then we can draw on it, I think, until November is the final report is when it's.
You know, another component of the ESSR funds, we talked about staff obligations, but it's been for recruitment and retention. We've seen a significant decline of applicants post-COVID and just making sure that we're staffing our, our buildings to their fullest has been absolutely a challenge and turnover is incredibly expensive. I think also one of the scenarios that we're in is that with the leadership turnover, the grant proceeds have not been as smooth or efficient as they otherwise could have been. And that's a challenge. And so we are in this scenario because of a variety of factors where we're, we're trying to make the best use of those funds as possible that best meet the needs of our students in this district and our staff in this district, but that is very likely that not all of those funds will go expended here in our district. We will likely be giving funds back. And I, I just want to be very clear to say that that does not fall solely on one individual. And that the board needs to recognize that that does not fall solely on one individual. Because these were multi-year grants and a lot of different people were involved along the way. So I also feel strongly that we should not expend grant funds in erroneous or frivolous nature, even though they're grant funds and people look at grant funds differently than local district dollars. They're still tax dollars raised somewhere. And so I think we need to keep that in mind. And I think it's, personally, I feel it's more appropriate to give those funds back if we can't spend them wisely than it is to spend them erroneously just to try to quote, use them up because I don't think that that's the most responsible use of that three dollars. So that's the scenario we are finding ourselves in now with a very short window to best utilize what is remaining. We have them spent documented and, and out the door in the hands of kids and staff.
Okay. So there are some things that you would like us to discuss as you said. Do you want to go into a non-public to discuss those at this time or do you want to wait till the end and all go in together?
Uh, one non-public, one not, but Jamie Henry, I bet.
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I, I guess it would only be non-public if it has to do with personnel. Um, my question was, Lori, can't use it for any of the school bus equipment that we're trying to.
So, so we actually had that discussion earlier today. I can try. My concern would be is we've had those buses in place for a year, so it's not in response to anything. It was our routine.
Right.
Replacement.
Yeah.
So the vehicles that we were able to purchase for earlier in the COVID years, I guess. I don't know how else to explain it. So, but it was earlier in the COVID period and it better, it was had, it had immediate benefit for distancing and was really clearly tied to the response to COVID. And these funds, even though it's September, or you know, August, September, many years later, they still must be used in response to or to a recovery from COVID. So I'm not sure that we're going to be able to pull on buses that we've been financing for a year.
Just follow up.
So, but, but, I mean, I can talk about the vans.
Yeah, that's sad. So the one thing that I would like to talk about though is the struggle we have because the lack of bus drivers are the result of COVID. We end up in scenarios where we can't transport students for any of our extracurriculars. Whether that is math theme, sports, gangs and or practices, home and away events. So we, we struggle, it, it's also our, like our trips to Chase Mills or the Rockingham Meeting House or any of those place-based educational opportunities that we are trying to really build into our curriculum to to improve outcomes for kids. We don't have the drivers in place. So one of the things that we would like to use ESSR funding for is vans that can be housed at each of the middle schools around the district that can be driven by people who don't require, if it's twelve passengers, we don't now require a specific license or endorsement to drive it. And so we can more easily, nimbly, efficiently move kids to the different places that they need to be to make sure that they're getting the extracurricular opportunities that we've budgeted for, we've communicated that we're doing and we're not then canceling or having parents drive at the last minute. So one of the data points I'm pulling for that is how many times did we have buses either not available or canceled because of the lack of drivers as a result. That's a direct result of we lost substitutes. We lost bus drivers as a result of COVID.
We're still short.
And we're still short in, in both areas. I, I had two half-day substitutes in my building last year. Whole year, two half-days where I had an actual substitute in my building. And so if we can purchase vans, then we can move kids ourselves. We've not taxing the transportation department that's already short because we're staying within the confines that we can do so legally safely and get kids where they need to be. I, I, I would love free preschool.
How many do you want?
Six, two for each middle school.
Two.
Potentially. But starting with one for each middle school, potentially two for each middle school. So that gives us the capacity to move classrooms of kids places.
I'm sure you looked into the regulations and laws about twelve-passenger vans, correct? Yeah. So you might be better off to look at fourteen-passenger school buses. A smaller fourteen-passenger school buses, because a lot of the insurance agencies, unless you're a private school, you cannot use the twelve-passenger vans.
Right. So that was part of the conversation too regarding our insurance carrier and where is their threshold for coverage and ensuring that that piece is included. So what, we'd like to explore that often for some of the remaining funds because it has a direct correlation to COVID and it would have a direct positive impact on our kids.
Sure. But.
Yeah.
No, I think the, I think the idea is wonderful. I think that, you know, you may either have to go a little bit smaller than the whole twelve or larger to the, you can do a fourteen passenger for activities and not have to require a special license. They should still go through eight hours of training with somebody.
Still doing a safety course, absolutely.
But not have to have that C D L.
I'm, yeah. I'm all for this. So one of the things that I hear a lot, at least in my town, is cross-country skiing or track. And kids just not doing it because they have to be up here at three o'clock and parents are working till five. And then you get into this, well, you can catch a ride. And then you get into this, well, you can catch a ride. Well, that's that's not always feasible either. So um, yeah, I I I think this is a good idea and I think it's good use of money, especially for the kids. And going on field trips is a huge issue. Um, there's always not, there's there's no bus. Like in Charlestown, our kids walk to Patch Park. Now, it's not that far, but there are parents that have issues with walking their kids to Patch Park. It's 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 not always a uh, it's safe, but um you to have vans that can get kids down there, you 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 send two vans down, you go back, you pick up more. Um, I, yeah, I like it. Go to the four, wherever kids need to go to where they're not walking, so. And I'm sure Vilas and Atworth are.
In the same boat.
Absolutely in the same boat.
That's definitely yours, yeah.
Yeah, so.
We have an estimate of cost per twelve-passenger van.
Fifty-seven, fifty-eight thousand dollars for the twelve, fourteen-passenger van that we would need per van. Um, but uh, we do need to, as Jamie mentioned, we need to confirm with the insurance provider kind of what their threshold cutoff is and then operate within that.
And is there any plan to have them like customize on the outside to be branded as?
They have to.
They have to.
Mm-hmm. And they can't be white.
That's a rule. Like this district can't have a white name.
You're not supposed to run white ones unless you're a private school. You can get away with it sometimes if you call it activities. Just put activities on the side, but you want to look into all of it.
The self it's news for special ed with the school bus on top, but it's being fine. I'm just curious because I drive by a district every day with their.
Yes, I know that. Doesn't mean it's legal.
Yeah, okay.
Happy to share the transportation thing again for Rivia.
Okay.
So other than the vans, is there anything else?
Uh, there's one other item, but it's related to non-public, um RS A nine-one A colon two A. Um, so we'll talk about that in a moment.
Is there any um any way we could um, I don't know, enhance our uh food capabilities or not charge kids for lunch and stuff like we didn't do in COVID?
It's not in response to COVID or recovery to COVID.
But isn't wasn't that what we did during COVID?
The government, it's the federal government, yeah. Some states.
What about security?
Does it tie into recovery from COVID?
Well, so that's it. Actually, I have not considered that yet because we did write the grant proposals. And this is, I'll put my prints a lot that that.
Yeah, it's a safe grant.
Uh, we wrote the grant proposal for the safe grant. We didn't get them. My proposal request for my building, for instance, was for additional cameras to help, you know, proactively reduce behaviors and um resolve conflicts more quickly because we have seen an escalation of student behaviors and mental health issues as a direct result of COVID. And so it ties into the radios as well. So I think those are actually already written.
Yeah.
Um, and could potentially, since they weren't funded through the safe schools grant, potentially we could put into ESR.
How many of our schools did write that wrote them and did?
Oh, I think at least.
Several.
I think all of us did write something.
All eleven, yeah.
Yeah, we wrote something for all of them for that safe schools grant and none of us were funded in that round. We were all waitlisted for that particular type of funding, but I think there, I I think you can. It's a valid argument here and ESR funding, and I had not considered that yet. What other ideas you got?
I just know everything we picked for that we didn't have funding for, but I think that actually fits because of behavioral.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. So that is one of the things we are looking to fund is uh or we funded is radios. So.
Yeah.
Fun as a world district. Uh, last year, we lost power in Charlestown in two of our schools for a period of three and a half hours and without power, we had no communication method other than our personal cell phones walking outside to make a call. We have emergency radios, but they didn't operate properly. And so we had had some ongoing discussion, like the the idea of let's have the same discussion over and over on the hamster wheel. I'm right there with you with the frustration level on some of those, Shelley. Uh, because we had had these ongoing discussions that they didn't work. Long story short, we realized that um bases communicate better than portables. Portables can't communicate with bases. Bases can communicate with other bases and other portable. And so when the person from the communications company arrives, I think they arrived thinking they were going to just appease us and tell us it was operator error and then got here and realized that nope, actually things didn't work the way they thought they should and expected them to. So we have ordered additional radios. We're looking to use ESR funding to um connect those. So these are radios that work essentially off of cellular data versus radios that just work off of radio frequency. But in all of our buildings, we also have these radios that work off of radio frequency that we use internally to our building. So we've used the ESR funding to get more of these cellular radio data, data, cellular data radios for administrators in each building, lead teacher, a base at the secretary's desk. Um, we're then going to be using hopefully some ESR funding to get the software one-time purchase so that those cellular data radios can talk to the other radios in each building. Restructuring our um communication channels so that we have the transportation channel. We have the emergency channel. Then we will have building-specific channels in each building and or wall pole and and also we'll have attendance area-specific channels. Then we will have an admin channel for the admin that are on there. And then we will have an all-call that interrupts any of those channels. In the case that it is an emergency, you all call and say, nope, everybody switch to this one or you direct what you need in that moment so that we can have that instant communication in emergency scenarios to keep people that need to be involved. And the expectation then is like now I will be carrying a radio with me everywhere. Not current practice, but it would be an expectation and then we know we can communicate with the people we need to communicate with when we need to. Those radios also do talk to, for instance, Charlestown Police Department, Walpole Department. They do communicate with these departments and so it just increases our level of immediate response and communication capabilities in our very rural setting.
Is there is there any licensing involved with it with this? It sounds like.
Buy it, you buy the software.
You buy the software package, you buy the licensing. We will then have um sort of a dispatch dashboard so that we will have the capability to go back and listen to radio communications that happened in the event, in in some sort of catastrophic event when you want to know what was actually communicated and when. We will have a record of that. Uh, we will be able to ping radios. So if we have an event where an individual or a uh, I mean, all these radios are in our buses too. Say we lose a a van, a bus, we can ping exactly the last patient based on the feltler. Yeah, so it just gives us a another layer of security um in those events. So that's another another piece that.
Yeah, I know. If you're dealing with radio signals that are not cell phone signals, there's a license involved with it.
Yeah, so there's FCC licensing involved and and all of that.
We have this in our buses for years, you know, so we paid for.
Yeah, yeah.
But it but the license goes with the radio, not with the person?
No, it actually goes to the, it's for the district for so many pieces, I believe, of equipment that you would have to.
And then you have to train the people to know what you're doing and stuff.
Well, we try to make it as easier.
And there's a certain level of frequency that you have to have a operator license.
Right, that's what.
We're not working, we're not going to that level, that. Yeah.
You wouldn't be able to announce it anyway because we can't even hear the nine-one-one dispatchers.
They're all private, right. They would all be private too.
The nine-one-one dispatchers from Kenehan won't care, so don't worry about it.
I do worry as well.
But um I know that this is something that the EMS and police have been worried about for a long time and it's good to hear that they will be able to access it. Um, because, you know, it's like if they come up on a scene and they need to be able to communicate with the people inside that they you know, they need a way of being able to do that. So that's that will be very good and I will feel more comfortable. And I won't get yelled at at my team.
I'm tired of getting yelled at there. I'm out.
Multi-part question. Um, how what, how much unspent ESR funds do we have?
Unspent?
Unsp- how much?
So we have fun budgeted about five hundred and eighty grand.
Five hundred and eighty. So this, the six buses comes about three hundred and sixty thousand, about sixty grand apiece-ish, right? Um, how for those cameras, what were you all looking at? Do you have a rough idea of how much by purse?
I have to look back at that. I don't recall, to be honest with you. Um.
Fifty, sixty.
Or a stolen.
Probably, easily.
Yeah, I have to look back at that. I mean, like, we we might have our solution. I don't. So we have three buses and then.
Cameras, we have cameras that are going to cost.
Depends on how big the school is, Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So the three middles, probably an Atworths. Fifty grand each.
Time will go.
Maybe the high school one is basing it because I just paid for all this for for school.
Yeah.
So and probably the high school might be a hundred maybe.
Well, it depends. So for instance, right, like so for instance, my school.
Right. You have a lot.
It's pretty good.
Yeah.
Um.
Cause you done them every year.
And so I I would be looking to only add seven.
Oh, yeah. So that's not, that's twenty grand.
Um.
Worrying, twelve hundred bucks apiece plus.
So am I corrected that?
You got enough.
The these are discussions in that the next meeting, you're going to come to us with some finite numbers and wish lists, correct?
Well, we're going to sign off and say yes.
Well, we can't sign off right now because they don't know what they want.
Correct, to the total dollar amount.
So that's why I'm saying like next meeting, we'll have dollar amounts and kind of your wish list and orders.
Yeah, and purchase order.
When's the due date for ESR?
November.
Yeah.
September.
September, okay. So I thought it was thirty.
Thirty.
Okay, so you're, um, so right now we're looking at about probably two hundred and fifty thousand dollars-ish for cameras.
Probably less.
Um, possibly less. How much we're looking at for the radios, which was?
So those are in there in budgeted as part of a activity that we had all, I believe, as part of an activity that we already have. So so that's already.
Done.
In the radio part, the piece of uh ten building size, two thousand dollars, twenty grand plus three forty-five times five. Do that math for me.
Yeah.
Another two thousand, so we're like twenty-two, a little less than twenty-two thousand for the ability for the emergency radios to talk with all the other radios in the district and to have the dispatch keys. So that would be added to that particular activity that already has been approved by the Satan done. So that's a twenty-two thousand add there.
So I think you can spend the bulk of it on things that are.
Well, and then you're wanting to go into a non-public, correct?
Right.
Yeah, something else, yeah.
Yeah.
Six hundred and thirty.
It will be less than that with, if she's only taking seven cameras, then you've put in a lot more sense prior to yours, so.
Well, depending on the non-public, we may decide no cameras whatsoever. Correct?
We can't really talk about, yeah.
I think that the ideas on the table right now are solid ideas to support safety, to support kids, to support learning.
Do you need the non-public then?
Yeah.
Will it help if I leave?
No, no, it's there's a whole, there's a whole group online too, so. But I think before we do that, I think it might be helpful to have our discussion C and then just go into the public ones potentially, if the board is willing.
And I think that makes sense. They're already on board with taking the non-publics together later and then back to two separate agenda items.
Yeah, let's go.
Are we going to do C and then we're going into non-public?
Yeah.
Can I, can I just ask one clarifying question?
Yes.
Um, under information, there's a revised twenty-four, twenty-five calendar?
Yep, so.
What did we revise?
Uh, so we just, uh, we changed Indigenous Peoples' Day to Columbus Day per new legislation that Columbus said we have to pop Columbus Day.
So nothing on the dates.
Columbus Day, I absolutely.
Oh, it was, at at the times I was at, it was the biggest, it made the biggest kerfuffle in the group of any of the legislative updates. I'm sure because it's.
It'll be banned soon enough.
So let's move on to C. Let's talk about our interim superintendent search process.
So I tried to map out for you on the search process, sort of the decision tree because I think will help us move forward a little bit more seamlessly. Um, so I think your first decision is if you want to start a search now for a full-time superintendent that you get now or as soon as possible or if you want to look for an interim superintendent first and plan a search for a full-time superintendent for some time in the future. So you either do your full-on search now and see if you get someone or you do an interim for the future full-time search.
Jamie.
Okay, so personal opinion, um, having worked in school districts for nineteen years. Um, usually if you do a search at this point in time, most all superintendents who are workers of assault already are under combat. And that's just, you know, that's just the way it is, right, with most administration for school district. Uh, doesn't mean that you might not get lucky, okay, because that, you know, maybe that does happen. Uh, I've never heard about it happening, but it could happen. Um, so my preference, uh, uh, and I guess we're doing this in open session.
There's part, there's portions that will go into non-public, but everything that can be here needs.
Clarifying, thank you. So my preference would be to do interim superintendent. Not that I think you're amazing, but you've got a job to do. And so I think it's, it would be to to figure that out, whatever it looks like. And then, you know, start our search, you know, October, November, whatever, and let's get busy. Second, with Jamie.
I agree with Jamie. A question about um, a history question. Last time we did this, two years ago, what, when did we start?
In October.
Started in October.
We started interviews.
We put the committee together and the committee started meeting in October. And um we did a lot, we did a lot of of deciding of of making our Mary Poppins list.
A lot.
Yeah.
Well, the good news is it's fresh.
Right.
And we started the actual.
We have Mary Poppins list, so we can, we can just review it and refine it so that we get the right Mary Poppins list then.
Formal.
You can finish asking your question.
Thanks. And we finished and we started the actual interview process. When?
When did we start the interview? I think it was, it was after the New Year, wasn't it?
I think so.
Yeah.
It wasn't in on it, I think.
No, yes, it was because we finished, we we had everything ready and we were able to post it um by uh before Thanksgiving. We had it posted and then we were able to start interviewing in January.
Yeah.
Okay, that's awesome.
Or and that's normally timeline. It's most superintendents. I shouldn't say this because they've changed it all over the place. Mine has given years notice, but most superintendents have to notify, I think it's an admin code, right, according to the thirtieth of March. By code, by Fritz, New Hampshire law, I think you have to notify by the thirtieth of March.
It might be. Um, and it's somewhat dependent on what the individual contract is. All of my contracts of that nature have always had a January notification deadline, both ways.
Yeah.
Um, they've always had January notification deadlines. That's fairly common practice in this state, but but.
Doesn't ours actually stay on number thirty?
I can't speak to what the, no. So that's your first choice. Search now, search later.
I think we're, or do I make a motion?
It doesn't hurt anything to just make a motion in terms of how you.
All right, I would make a motion that we move forward with the process on determining how to hire an interim superintendent, which is another discussion. And then start our search for um a superintendent to begin on July one of the next, just of the next fiscal school year.
Any other discussion? You done? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, next decision.
All right, beautiful.
For the interim. For the interim superintendent. And this is, uh, we, we quickly will end up in non-public, but I think as much as can be done in public needs to be done in public. The district has received interest from two individuals who are interested in being an interim. So the board has a choice. The board can review the individuals who have expressed interest. The board can then just appoint one of those individuals. The board could also conduct a search that could include those individuals. But could potentially open up to other individuals as well. So the board kind of needs to choose if they want to do a search or an interim or. Debate and discuss from the candidates they have. So this is probably when you need to go into non-public because it is. Under ninety-one A colon three two A. Um. The, the potential consideration of hiring of somebody, right? And names have to be discussed. And so this isn't the format from that. But that's your next kind of level of decision if you're going to. Review who you have and point from that, or if you're going to go through a search process. Um. And open it up larger. My recommendation to you on the search process and opening it up large, and actually in both, it doesn't matter which process or path you take. We need to be very specific about timelines. And we need to be very specific about expectations for who we want in that seat. Um, because that's going to make a big difference in terms of your board goal of stability and stable, uh, simplification. That it ties directly back to that. So that's the next level of consideration.
So move to go into non-public.
Thank you, second. We actually have those rooms, so we can be right back in there, right, Carol?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Oh, you don't have to leave.
Our agenda is the admin report.
Question, I'll be able to answer this. Just to get some more information about this. This is about the iReady reports. And when I look at, um. The high school, only forty-nine out of. The word to go. Of sixty-one out of four hundred and seventy-six students were, went through the process of iReady. And so that ninety or eighty-four percent are three or more grade levels below. And that was on the, and that was the, uh, reading and math was worse. Um, is this math? Um. Math, only forty-nine students out of four hundred and seventy-six could be iReady and that was ninety-six percent were three or more grade levels. Behind. So I'm sure there's an explanation.
Yes, I have a guess, but I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like to get more information.
I have a, yeah, I don't think the high school uses iReady. I think it's certain students, but.
Yes, I'm sure there's an explanation why. It just needs to be, um, explained. It just looked really bad. If you look at the colors, it looks really bad.
No, but I think it's something on those lines.
So as part of the report, do we want to ask the person who?
I'd ask superintendent, but interim superintendent to ask.
Sarah. The Simmons. High school, right?
Kristen. This is the artist, this is fourteen Kristen, so.
Yeah, but the, the principal would know if she runs iReady all the time anyways, yeah. I don't think they run iReady like they do at the middle school and the little school. Elementary school, that. I don't think.
Kind of my little question about the, about the course.
Fair question, thank you. I'll get back to you in a minute.
Do you have more questions about the calendar?
No, I make a motion during.
No.
I make a motion to accept the treasurer report.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, beautiful. Now.
I make a motion during.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Happy birthday.